Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Canton Capital Planning Committee meeting for Thursday, March 20th. We're starting right at 7:01 this evening. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Our goal this evening is to see if we can vote the remaining capital requests that are outstanding, reopen any issues that we need to vote. And we'll jump right in. I'd like to start this evening with the library because we have some people from the library here this evening. The library request, the current request in front of us was for the interior renovation. This is part of many different components of funding that we've all seen previously. And this is for $2,168,000. That would be from cash reserves. That-
Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the March 25th Select Board meeting. Before we begin, I want to point out that this meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast by Canton Community TV at a later date. Mr. Albert had an emergency come up, and he will do his best to join us tonight, but we will at least start without him. And we'll give JR an audition, being the clerk, so good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. First, Mr. Conley?
Yes, sir. I thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to have a moment of silence in memory of honor of Joan T. Driscoll. She was born in Boston, she passed away on March 20th, 2025, and she was 90 years old. Born in Boston, Joan grew up in Boston, was graduated Jeremiah Burke High School. She made lifelong friends in Dorchester and moved to Nod with the love of her life, John, in 1965, citing the Nod Theater and Nod Hospital as selling points for their relocation. She was a woman of great faith and was a daily communicant at St. Catherine's of Siena's Church. Joan was an avid cook, and a Portuguese sweetbread was her family's favorite. Joan was a dear and beloved wife of the late John T. Driscoll. They had 10 children, 18 grandchildren, and nine great-grandchildren. And Mark Driscoll, one of her sons, lives in Canton with his wife Laurie, and he represents the Town of Canton for the Blue Hills Regional School District. If we could keep the, she was buried from St. Catherine's yesterday. If we keep the Driscoll family and their thoughts and prayers, and they have great memories of their mother. I know I talked to Mark, and he said they have great memories. So if you could have a moment of silence in memory of Joan T. Driscoll. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. All right, so we will move into our public comment period. As I do each meeting, I will read the following statement. "The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedback and concerns, but the public comment portion of the meeting is not meant to be a question-and-answer format. There will be no response to any public comment when presented. Public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and up to three minutes per speaker. Those that wish to speak should stand at the microphone and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please state your name and what town you live in. You do not need to give your address. I would ask that all members of our audience be respectful of each speaker as well as each other. Anyone who does not wish to speak or who was unable to speak due to the time limit may submit their comments in writing for the board's review and consideration." With that being said, we will stop public comment at 7:04. I will go over to my left.
Good evening. Susan Harrington, Canton citizen. Tonight's Select Board meeting is the last one before the election as well as the release of the police audit report. I'm hopeful that the audit report will provide insights that will help our town heal. I am committed to being part of that process and finding ways to restore the public's trust, both in our town government and in our police department. I love this town, and I have deep roots in this community. I believe that in order to do better, we need to take a clear-eyed look at what we love, but also at what needs to be repaired. In the recent candidate forum, Mr. Conley insinuated in his closing remarks that I was in favor of defunding the police when he said, "Now they want to defund the police? Heaven help us." Let me be clear. At no time and in no setting have I ever said anything of the sort, and Mr. Conley knows this. Further, I have never heard any Canton citizen express this opinion. The facts are that I support increasing the investment in our police department and ensuring that our officers have the leadership they deserve, as well as additional training and mental health resources. It's important for me to correct another statement. In last week's candidate forum at Orchard Cove, Mr. Conley stated that in-person Select Board meetings were shut down last July because, quote, "Eight of 10 people who came to the meetings don't live in town, and a lot of them have been drinking. I, along with many other Canton residents, have attended Select Board meetings consistently for several years and know these statements to be false. Mr. Conley, do the right thing and retract these false, incendiary, and divisive statements. We are all Canton residents who love our town. As a community, it's time to turn the page. It's time for new voices and new ideas to help get our town and government thinking proactively and back to focusing on what matters to Canton voters and families: our schools, our seniors, quality of life, and healing the division within our community. Together, we can build Canton's best future." Thank you.
Is that working?
Give it one more try. Yep.
Can you hear me? Okay. Brenda Sweeney, "My Humble Opinion: The Straight and Narrow Path." Webster's Dictionary defines it as "morally strict code of behavior or the proper, honest, and moral path of behavior." April 1st is the first day of jury selection for the second Karen Reed trial, a case that has changed this town forever, a trial that will make history. Its results will define this town for years to come. Some say it will set new precedent, rewrite the law journals. Some say the outcome will deliver justice. When all is said and done, this town needs to be on the right side of history to find a path of redemption from the laughingstock we've become. How do we manage that is the question. The power to steer this town should be decided by the will of the people. The citizens of this town are depending on those few they elected to take us down that straight and narrow path. We would expect nothing less from the people we elected to do just that, nothing less from the people we trusted to do just that, nothing less from the people who took an oath to do just that. The will of the people should prevail in every decision made. We're at the mercy of this board for another week. After that, this board may look exactly the same, or it may look very different, but either way, we all need this board to take us down the straight and narrow path. Everything we do moving forward is critical. Let's be crystal clear. Regardless of their final report, we're not talking about a little bit of poor judgment and insufficient training that's easily remedied. The straight and narrow path is not inverted. It has no apparitions, and you won't find equipment or electronic disposal bins on that path either. None of the trail markers on that path say 323232, and all the cameras work properly. Nothing will obscure the view, and there's no detour to Middleborough. You'll certainly never stumble across a lost gun or badge on that path, just like evidence doesn't sit in the rest area for three years only to mysteriously pop up later. Some will try to dismiss the behaviors we've seen by saying, "All we need is some retraining," but when there's no transparency, it's garbage in, garbage out. We all know they had a year to sit around the campfire and prepare, so please don't insult our intelligence. Your peacock feathers are a joke. This town's reputation is in tatters, and our police chief is a disgrace. Don't let her drag our decent officers down with her. Don't let Helena's legacy be the legacy of this board and therefore this town. Every decision moving forward will shape our future. This board will be remembered for that outcome. So, members of this board, what do you want the history books to say about you? I hope the history books smile down on Canton for the right thing, for making history for the right reasons. And when we look in the rearview mirror, we need to be able to hold our heads high because through all this turmoil, in the end, we did exactly that, the right thing. You own it on April 8th, citizens. Make it happen. It's your future. Thank you.
Jennifer O'Donnell, Canton, Mass. I would like to know how much money did the Canton Nine investigation cost the Town of Canton? How much money did the Duck Gate investigation and the prosecution cost the Town of Canton? How much will it still cost Canton? Lanker, you were overheard during that investigation in Honeydew, saying it was a huge waste of resources and time. I have to say I couldn't agree more. Whatever came of the code of conduct policy that you are updating, what ramifications are there for breaking the code of conduct and repeatedly breaking it? The chief of police's contract is about to end. I've heard that you are in negotiations to renew it. If this is true, have you posted the position externally to interview other potential candidates? Is the position open to other candidates other than the chief currently? Why didn't the board or the chief of police make a public statement to address the FBI arrest of a 23-year-old man for trafficking a 15-year-old girl out of the Town of Canton? Why was no public comment to address the Canton man arrested by the FBI for international ties of money laundering and distributing of drugs of over $24 million? And isn't it embarrassing that today, a pedestrian accident reported by the Canton Police Department had to turn off comments because they knew the embarrassment that would have followed if they left it on? That's all. I'll email these and give you your 10 days to reply.
Rocco Camerata, Canton. I'm not sticking up for John or anyone on the board, but for him to have to retract something, I didn't see what he said about the drinking and all that, but I will say, last week before the meeting, there was a group of people that were in the meeting drinking shots of vodka outside. So I don't know what he said, but I'm just letting you guys know. Thank you.
Rita Lombardi. Look, there's an election April 8th. We have appeared before the Select Board, myself, for over 18 months, looking for change. And every single week, we don't get that change. We're not even listened to. We just came out of 10 months from the Zoom closet. You know, John, we heard you at the forum, I believe it was the forum when, or the Select Board meeting, whatever, you said that police oversight wasn't the responsibility of the Select Board. Then you said it was Charlie's responsibility. Poor Charlie, I don't know how it felt to be under that bus, but then it was Charlie's responsibility after, you know, the board had told us 18 months ago that you had allowed this responsibility to be the chief's, and she could self-manage. And then afterwards, you said, you kind of alluded that it was your responsibility. The oversight of the police is the Select Board's responsibility, and we have not seen that done well at all. As a matter of fact, it's been poorly done, and we have evidence tape, surveillance from the Canton Police Department, that is edited, inverted, and turned over in a murder trial as if it is exemplary kind of evidence. It's time for change. It's time for Canton to get out of where we are stuck and move forward by electing Susan Harrington as the next Select Board member. We need someone who can get us out of this, and, John, for two years, you haven't done it. So I don't know what's going to change because it hasn't happened yet. I know that people in the town love you, John. You've been here for a long time, and you've helped a lot of people, and people appreciate that, and I appreciate that, too. It's just time for a change and time to bring us forward. And the first time I came to a Select Board meeting, I came because I was concerned about what was going on in the town, and I had heard things. The first time I came, I came to the mic and I spoke. I was the last person to speak, and when I walked away, you were caught on a hot mic referring to me as an effing random citizen. And now, I hope that this is the last Select Board meeting, that we see you and that you have that opportunity to do that. I wish you well. I thank you for everything that you've done for this town, and now I think it's time for the Town of Canton to turn the page, come together, move forward, and let's make this town what it can be.
Hi, my name is Ian. I just wanted to clear up what Rocco just said. I'm sorry?
What town, please?
I'm from Mansfield.
All right, so folks, I got it. All right, so your name and your town, and yes, you are allowed to speak.
My name is Anne Jones, and I live in Mansfield.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to clear up what Rocco thought that he saw in the parking lot because it's- So I used to be a part owner of a juice bar for five years, and I have recently started supplying two-ounce ginger shots to my friends who have aches and pains, arthritis. You can Google it, what ginger does for you. But I bring them in two-ounce shots. We say cheers, and we shoot them like whiskey or whatever. I think I have some in my car right now, if you really want me to go and get them and share them with you guys, but they really are ginger shots, and they're for health. Sorry, Rocco, but you were mistaken with what you saw.
I'm sure they were.
I can go get one literally right now.
All right, folks, folks. All right, so I want to take just a few minutes to start out by clarifying some of the statements that were made at the last meeting, as folks, as well as statements that have been said over these last few years. So last week, folks, please. Last week, statements were made regarding Lieutenant Lang in an incident that occurred 20 years ago. The statement that there was an agreement that stated Lieutenant Lang will not be promoted is simply not true. Lieutenant Lang, as are all Canton police members, are part of civil service and therefore are eligible for promotions throughout the course of their careers, provided that their test scores place them at the top of the promotion list. The incident involving Lieutenant Lang was part of the scope of the police audit, and I ask the public to reserve judgment until the results have been made public. There has also been much discussion in the past about how the Select Board does not tell the police chief what to do, and as police commissioners, we are not doing our job. Since I was the one that said this statement twice, once during Select Board open office hours and once in a public meeting, I wanted to clarify these statements for the public. During the Select Board open office hours, I was asked where Canton Police was installing the flock cameras. When I said that I didn't know, I was asked, "Shouldn't I know where they were going?" My response was, "I don't tell the police how to do their job." Then a few weeks later, during an open meeting, it was raised that letters were mailed to certain residents in town, and the Select Board was again asked if we had CPD looking into this. And again, I stated that we don't tell the CPD what crimes to investigate. Yes, the Select Board are the police commissioners by town bylaw, but we do not have oversight into police operations. Our job is to hire a police chief and provide the necessary resources and staffing to do their job effectively. None of the members of this board have any training or background to direct the operations of a law enforcement agency. Similarly, we are also the road commissioners, the cemetery commissioners, and the water and sewer commissioners. We would not presume to tell DPW how to engineer, construct, or pave roadways. Over the last few years, we have heard the terms "moving Canton forward" and "how does Canton heal." In my opinion, one member, the way that we do this is we stop saying inflammatory statements and stop spreading misinformation. Simply because you read it online does not make it true, and because you say something does not make it true. We need to be respectful of each other regardless of what you believe or think. I truly hope that regardless of what side of an issue you are on, you can respect those that do not share your opinions, and that is how we will move forward. All right, thank you. Thank you. All right. Mr. McCourt, start us off, please.
Mr. Chairman, there is an authorization for the superintendent of schools to submit an accelerated repair program statement of interest form to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the D N S Luce Elementary School, and we have the superintendent with us.
And Mr. Lynch.
And-
And the Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Lynch. Gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening. So we are very thankful to come before you tonight. We have an application for the statement of interest for MSBA. We are not building a new school. I want to be clear about that.
We are building a new school.
We are building a new school, not another new school. This application is for a different MSBA program, which is accelerated repair. The roof at the Luce needs attention. It has for a little while. It has been exacerbated recently by the rain, snow, and ice. It really kind of codified the fact that we have to address it. The MSBA has paused this program for a little while, and they opened the window and started sending emails to superintendents. If you want to reply, go for it. So these are smaller projects, but important projects. Same thing, it's a funding agency. They can supplement a project. We project something between $1 and $2 million for a roof repair. It is something we have planned for in our debt capital up to this point, but it'd be nice to get some help from the state. There's no cost on our part. We went through this before. You want to put your application in. What was critical, and Mr. Lynch used to work for the MSBA, so he did a great job authoring the SOI, but they're only doing it for this year, and then they're going to pause for next year. So it's a two-year cycle at this point in time. They're trying to keep up with construction costs. So we thought it would be prudent to put this in, give it a shot, get in the pipeline at least, and if we have to resubmit, as we did for the GMS, you know, so be it. So I want to turn it over to Mr. Lynch, who did a great job putting this together. I was his editor.
Yeah.
But I definitely relied on his expertise, and I thank David Bichelli as well, our facility director, for helping with this. Mr. Lynch?
Yeah, thanks. I think you've covered it nicely. It's an opportunity for the district to at least put forward a submission and get some assistance from the MSBA, hopefully if we're accepted into the program. And if not, you know, we at least get the ball rolling, and when they do open this again in two years, we'll have a baseline to build off of and resubmit and continue to make that effort. So, you know, if all things fall into our favor, we would have some support from the state for this project, which would be great.
We would support this. It's actually in our debt capital plan, the year's out. You know, if we were not to get this over that period of time, the roof still needs to be repaired. That's clear. So we're doing some planning through capital to get that done, but if we have the opportunity to have some MSBA funding, as we did for the Galvin Middle School, it would be very beneficial to the town. But we have a great school over at the Luce, and it's in need of a new roof, so we put this before the board. It requires two votes of approval, one from the Select Board and one from the school committee.
Has the school committee voted on it yet? Are they voting on it?
It'll vote on it on Thursday.
Okay. Is the accelerated repair program, is that similar to the school program where a certain percentage, like, would we need to approve the full amount at a town meeting, and then we would get reimbursed X amount?
Yeah, it's a reimbursement program, so it's similar to the core program, which is what we're going through with the Galvin project right now. It's just a faster timeline. So the MSBA, if you were, if we were accepted under ARP, would assign us the OPM rather than doing that procurement process. They'd assign us the designer instead of that procurement process. So it speeds it up, but yes, ultimately, the town would need to appropriate the funds for the project, and then it would be reimbursed as work is performed.
Okay, perfect. Any questions for our superintendents?
Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. What do you think the chances are, and how much do you think we'll get?
Yeah, that's always the question. So I'll give you the MSBA line, I guess, is that you're always up against whoever you submit against and, or who's in your, I guess, cohort of submissions. So from our end, we're not really sure, you know, who we're up against. They have limited funds that they can distribute, and they try to address the neediest schools. So we think that we've made a pretty good case that the Luce is, you know, in need of a fix, an update on the roof, and how that ties and impacts our educational program is the key thing to make your case on, and, you know, I think we've done a pretty good job of doing that here, so we'll see.
Mr. Conley?
Mr. Chairman, to the Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, would this accelerate it? Because we know the longer we wait, what happens to the library, the more expensive it's going to be. So would this help us? I know we have to pay for it upfront, and is that in the budget for this fiscal year? I mean, July 1st?
So- So the timing of this program is that the MSBA makes their decision on ARP projects in October, so we would get a notice of whether or not we'd be accepted in October of 2025, which then, they operate on a calendar cycle, so then they schedule projects for calendar year 2026. You know, I would, if we were selected, I'd like to have a conversation with them about timing our start with the fiscal year of '27 because we've already put debt capital towards FY '27 on our end, so it would hopefully line up nicely, but-
One follow-up, if I may. Would this, who was I going to say? Are we taking safeguards to make sure it doesn't get any worse?
Yeah.
I know you have the, people in charge of the grounds of maintenance do a tremendous job, so I just want to make sure that they're putting a patch over the hole, per se.
Yeah, they spend a lot of time doing a routine of clearing roof drains and getting up there and patching up holes and nicks and everything else that they come across, but at the end of the day, chasing water is incredibly challenging, and so they do their best, but-
I know where it's going to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they've done really well with the mitigation techniques. However, you know, you don't want to lose the integrity of it, as you referenced, you know, get to a point. So I think they monitor often, there's a lot of skylights, and there's different areas that were patched at different times, so it is safe. I want to be clear about that. There's times when ceiling tiles have become saturated and fallen through. The recent, the February vacation, snow and ice was very difficult, and it kind of led us to the final conclusion that we have to submit this and get it done. The mitigation techniques do not hold up against really strong weather, so we want to be the best that we can be. We put in for it. He gave a very diplomatic answer about MSBA. I probably would, if had the opportunity, remind MSBA that we helped them out during a recent pilot session. They're trying to advance the sustainability techniques through the ARP program, and we were one of 20 schools in the whole state to serve as a pilot. They came in, they looked at all of our mechanisms and such, our windows, and if we were to make some upgrades, so I hope that goodwill helps. We certainly gave them a good tour and gave them some good information in our relationship with MSBA through the GMS project. We're in very good standing. We meet timelines, and, you know, we hopefully, it can benefit the town again.
Mr. Chairman, is this for the entire roof at the Luce, or is it for a section?
So we've submitted for the entire roof.
The entire roof, and the current roof is, oh, well?
It's been upgraded, updated, or fixed, or replaced over various periods of time. I think the newest section is 2003.
Yeah. It's time.
It's time.
Do the whole thing, that's the best.
We will.
Did I see the fifth graders doing recess out there with umbrellas on the roof? Thought that was very ingenious, so. O'Donnell, did you have a quick question?
O'Donnell? Yep. Is there any concern that if the project wouldn't be getting done till '26, '27, that there's going to be issues with mold? If, I mean, I'm envisioning where the roof is and where the tiles start in the classroom. There's quite a bit of distance, that's quite a bit of stuff that can go wrong, electrical, mold, all sorts of stuff, so much like the library where it was left alone too long, which is what made the budget problem. Is there any risk that the Luce is going to go over budget due to leaving it while waiting for the funding?
So that's the answer. No, I think, good, very good question. I don't, you always have to be careful with water, and I think one of the, we have a great head custodian there that monitors the areas of concern all the time, as well as our facility director. So I think it's something that we need to be aware of, and if we continue to have some storms, we gotta, we probably have to accelerate that monitoring, but that's always a risk with water that we have to be- be aware of, so I just think we have to take care of it. If we're ever in a position where it is not going to meet the timeline of MSBA, then we're going to have to step in and fund it a different way locally.
Are you doing any air quality testing to ensure that mold won't become a problem for these children and teachers?
We haven't at Luce, right?
No, but we do replace the filters in the univents. We have individual air filters in each classroom and are available to staff, and it is something that we generally pay attention to, and if the concerns are raised, it's something we would investigate.
The concerns being raised officially, if you could investigate. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Aye, Mr. McCourt.
This motion, as it stands, is written from the drop box?
Correct.
Having convened in an open meeting on March 25, 2025, the Select Board of the Town of Canton, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts Building, School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated, form dated March 2025 for the Dean S. Luce Elementary School located at 45 Independent Street, Canton, Mass. 0201, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for the replacement of the roof to decrease the maintenance and energy costs, and hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits to the Town of Canton, or commits the Town of Canton to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So...
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I'll drink it.
4:10.
Let me get my app.
What part? Didn't you understand that I said I wanted it?
I know. All right, Mr. McCourt, next.
Mr. Chairman, next we have the Revere Inc. signage trust request for the use of the entire park at Paul Revere Heritage Site for three events in 2025. Allison F. will be before the board regarding the upcoming events for the heritage site, a heritage festival, region-wide yard sale, and a free family concert, and a pooch parade.
Oh, pooch parade.
She has submitted the entertainment permits and fee waivers for the board's consideration. So, Allison's in front of us to explain these.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So, in terms of outdoor events for which we'd like to use the whole park, those are the three that we are doing this year. This will be the fourth Canton Heritage Festival on Saturday, May 17. It's going to be bigger and better than ever. We're super excited about it, but we would appreciate the select board's permission to use the entire park as, you know, and we make use of the entire park with all the different tents and activities that we have. Once again, we will have, along with about 100 vendors and food trucks, we will have reenactors and live performances and inflatables and games and activities for kids, copper exhibit, all sorts of wonderful things for which we would like to use the whole park and get the entertainment permit. For the event in September, last year, we had a region-wide yard sale in October, and then our family concert in September. That was the first yard sale we'd done. The children's concert, we've done for a few years now. This year, we're combining them. We're not totally clear on the timing yet. The concert will definitely be from 2:00 to 3:00. We haven't quite pinned down when exactly the yard sale will be, probably either like 10:00 to 12:00, or maybe like 11:00 to 1:00. And the yard sale portion would take place down in the oval, the kind of southern portion of the park, whereas the children's concert would take place up on the area next to the yellow barn, where the original foundation is for the, where the barn used to stand. So, for that one, and that's a Sunday, so we're looking for the, asking for the select board to waive the town fee, though we know that the state fee can't be waived for that. For October 25, this will be our second pooch parade. The pooch parade is co-hosted. It's the heritage site, along with the Canton Lions Club and Maryland and Company. Last year, we had 50 costume dogs, and it was my favorite day of the entire year. It was absolutely wonderful. So, looking to make a lot of improvements and changes this year to make it even bigger and better. For that one, we are asking for permission to use the entire park, as we have the parade start up near the yellow barn, and then go down across the bridge and around the oval. We'll have some animal rescue groups and some vendors, like we did last year, but just again, more. But we are asking for the entertainment request with the fee waiver for Saturday, and we are also asking for one for Sunday, as that is the rain date. The other two events don't have rain dates. We're just going to hope really hard for good weather, but for that one, we have a rain date of Saturday, of Sunday, the 26th, so we need to get entertainment permits for both days, just in case. We, for all of our events, we now, there is now a neighborhood advisory committee that is meeting quarterly, and there is a specific email list for neighbors of the heritage site to sign up for, so that we will be keeping the neighbors notified ahead of time and right beforehand of all outdoor events, especially for the heritage festival. We reach out to the neighbors, especially who live along the access road, to just let them know and make sure they have my contact information and can reach me with any problems. One major change we're looking to make this year for the heritage festival is to kind of reorganize the placement of things, where food would now be at the back of the park, near that access road up near the yellow barn, because we've had a bit of a problem where, in past years, the kids' activities and the food was all down by Revolution Way, and so a lot of people, families weren't coming to the other side of the park at all. So, we're going to switch things up a little bit and put the community tent down with the kids' activities, and then put the picnic tent and the food up near the museum. So, that's the only real major change we're doing for this year. And as I said, we will inform, of course, all the neighbors, and we already have permission from the ZBA for our yard signs to go up starting on April 21, and they will come down by May 20.
Great, excellent. So, Allison, just a couple of quick questions. So, for the heritage festival, are you coordinating with DPW as far as trash removal and everything?
I am. There is a meeting later this week that will have representatives from DPW, police, fire, and buildings, and possibly Parks and Rec to coordinate everything, and as, we usually do a town coordination meeting like that.
Yep.
And the departments have always been so amazing about supporting and helping, and we are hoping for that again this year, but that meeting is scheduled for later this week.
Okay. And then, in regards to the yard sale, just because, you know, sometimes at these yard sales, not at the site, but people just leave their stuff on the, like, whatever didn't sell, they just leave it on the corner, and they post it on Facebook or something like, hey, come get it. We're not going to have that, like, because that, I'm like, we're going to need dumpsters for people to throw away there.
No. So, what we did last year, that we don't have confirmation of yet, but we have a statement of interest, there was a junk removal company who sponsored last year, and he offered a deal to any of the vendors and said, oh, anything you don't sell today, you know, for a very discounted rate, you can throw it in the truck that we have here for advertising, and it worked out really well. The vendors are each assigned a specific spot, so as they're cleaning up, we know, you know, if there's something in that spot, I would be able to look at a list and say, this is that person. Let's contact them and say, you got to, you know, take your stuff with you. But we always have volunteers on site that day, and I'm always around checking as people pack up their stuff and to make sure that no one leaves anything behind. And the junk removal company has indicated they are interested in sponsoring again, and hopefully they'll offer that same deal.
Allison, you could have said, Mike, I got it. I would have accepted that. Any questions from this now?
No.
All right.
Mr. Chair, just one thing before you read the motion.
Yep.
So, the motion is permission to use the entire grounds, but also I see in the applications looking for a fee waiver as well?
Yep.
So, it is included in the motion.
Oh, it is? Great. I didn't read it. Sorry. Allison's got it.
This chair, I move that the board approve the request for the use of the entire town-owned park at Heritage Site on the following events. Canton Heritage Festival on Saturday, May 17, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., rain or shine. The region-wide yard sale and free family concert on Sunday, September 14, 2025. Yard sale time is to be determined. The concert is 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., rain or shine. The Canton Pooch Parade on Saturday, October 25, 2025. Time to be determined. Rain date, Sunday, October 26, 2025. In addition, approval, the one-day entertainment permit application as presented with the request for a waiver of the town one-day entertainment fee contingent upon building commissioner, police chief, and fire chief approval.
So, Mr. McCourt, we're going to take those. It's two separate. So, the first motion is to approve the use of the town-owned park for the events that Mr. McCourt listed on those dates with the rain date. So, do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. And now, we'll take a motion to approve the permit applications.
You want to do another motion?
Yeah, just another.
Approve the, a motion to approve the one-day entertainment permit applications as presented with the crest for a waiver of the town one-day entertainment fee contingent upon building commissioner, police chief, and fire chief approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and just so the public is aware, this is something that we have done in the past, where we waive the entertainment permit application fee for a town-owned event. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you for all your support. I look forward to seeing all of you on the 17th of May.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Allison. All right. Next, Mr. McCourt.
Next, we have the townwide cleanup, Keep Canton Beautiful. Mr. Jeff Sullivan will be before. Give us a update.
Hi, Jeff Sullivan.
You're welcome to go here if you prefer.
Go to the chair?
Why not?
You're awake, God, tonight, Joe.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, not that chair, the other one.
No, I'm listening here. I'm good. So, yeah, I'm just taking this free press here to let you all know that on Saturday, April 5, we're having our fourth annual townwide cleanup on behalf of the Walk, Bike, Hike Committee. We've partnered this year with the Public Works Department and Parks and Rec, and we have a big, you know, pending the weather, we're going to have a great turnout. We have 14 sites selected around town, and as Rita has just pointed out here tonight, that you can take out your phone and sign up tonight, whether you live in Canton or not, visit my beloved Mansfield. You can come back and come on the 5th and clean up trash around town. I think it's a common issue that we can all get around, that it is pretty bad. My good friend Trish here is leading the charge on Route 138 at a cleanup site, so thank you for that. I will make public record that there is the only member of the select board that's been signed up that day.
They cook that day, though.
What's that?
Don't they cook?
No, no, we, if, there was one member, I'm going to ask Cook for me. He's not here tonight, but I will say that Parks and Rec is handling the cooking, but I, you know, we could use more site leaders at the downtown location, Canton Junction, the 138 location on the south side. Mr. McCourt, if, you know, you have anything to do that day, just putting it out there.
I didn't realize you were going to be making motions tonight.
Well, we're not making motions. We're just asking for volunteers, because, you know, it just takes people to pick up trash. It is a common issue, something we do deal with in this highly transient town that we live in, but it is an issue. But I encourage everyone here tonight, everyone watching, to please consider volunteering on April the 5th by visiting keepcantonbeautiful.org and help keep our community litter-free. So, thank you very much.
Unfortunately, Mr. Sullivan, I'm in Florida for two weeks.
Keepcantonbeautiful.org is the website. Takes just a moment to sign up on your smartphone or tablet. Mr. Duddy?
I signed up.
Rita signed up tonight, so.
How many, how much has it grown over the four years? So, the first year, you had 100, second year, you know?
So, the first year was the strongest turnout. We had a little over 310 registered, and the, and the, and the weather permitted, so it was a great cookout. Mr. Conley was one of the members who helped cook that day. Thank you for that. Yes, you were there too, Mr. Longford. I appreciate you for that. Thank you. The last two years were, the weather was inclement at best, so, you know, it was about 150. So far this year, we have about 230 people signed up, but we're hoping, you know, with this last push and your public endorsement of this project, that we can boost those numbers, try to get, you know, as many as possible. Quincy, for instance, they do the same cleanup, and they get about 2,000 citizens. Obviously, it's a larger community. This is a larger effort by a larger group called Keep Massachusetts Beautiful, where there are about 47 communities in the Commonwealth that have a chapter, and the Walk, Bike, Hike Committee runs the Keep Canton Beautiful chapter. But, you know, the more participants we can get, the better off, you know, the bigger impact we'll make.
Mr. Sullivan, have you reached out to the schools at all, just the kids that need community service, or?
Yeah, no, the school department has been excellent. All the school grounds are of the cleanup sites. I think only the Galvin and Hanson has maxed out its volunteer level at 50 volunteers. You don't, you can't have too many folks, because otherwise, they'll just be standing around, so we want to try to, we try to limit some of the sites based on the level of trash. But all the schools will be open for public restrooms, but yes, they've been notified through various newsletters that public service hours are, this is a great way to get those public service hours. And then, following the event for all the volunteers, there'll be a cookout at the high school, put on by the Parks and Rec Department, or we'll have a DJ and a magician.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you for your time, all.
Questions for Mr. Sullivan from the board?
Any other questions?
Nope.
Mr. Duddy, that's keepcantonbeautiful.org.
Got it right here. Website you go to. I've already saved it in my browser.
Yeah, perfect, perfect.
I just want to say, this is a great opportunity for the community to get together and help clean up and make Canton beautiful. It's just, it's a great opportunity. I came in here. I had no idea it was happening, and Jeff showed me how to sign up at keepcantonbeautiful, is that what it was, .org? And I'm going to be doing the center of town from 10:00 to 12:00, and I encourage everybody to do it. It's a great way to come together, no matter where you are, on any topic.
Thank you all.
All right. Best of luck to you.
Jeff, yes. Thank you over. Thank you.
I'll be thinking of you on the tee box, though.
[laughing]
All right. Next, Mr. McCourt.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the change of manager application for Canton Lodging LLC DBA Homewood Suites, 50 Royal Street, Canton, Mass.
I would second that, but I want to know what, why do we have to do that? I'm just curious, Chair.
Just a name change, so perhaps whoever was the manager left is now...
Okay, so I second it.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the request to hold the Clark Runs on Dunkin' 5K Road Race, to be held on Sunday, October 19, 2025, beginning at 9:00 a.m. from the Dunkin' Donuts offices on Royal Street, contingent on police, fire, and building approval and written confirmation from Point 32 to ensure there are no sports or other conflicts on the property at the same time as the road race.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Glad Mr. Sullivan's not here to pressure us into running that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Chair, I move that the board accept and authorize the use and gift in accordance with the terms thereof of under Mass. General Law 44, Subsection 53A, a $100 donation to the Fire Department from Theodore Lifman.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the request for the use of mitigation funds in the amount of $180,000 for a town-wide traffic study.
I second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. So, Mr. Duddy, do you want to shed any light on this, or do you want me to do it, or?
I can shed a little bit of light on it, but feel free to add.
All right.
You know, there's clearly, you know, traffic is one of the most popular, you know, the most popular issue we hear about in the select board office, you know, complaints about traffic and so forth. So, there's been a lot of suggestions from citizens about different techniques to calm traffic, whether it be reducing speed limits or making streets one-way, all kinds of suggestions. So, really, what we have to do... So, really, what we have to do is kind of get a handle on, you know, what types of mitigation the town can engage in to help traffic. And so, the first step in that is to do a study, to examine our streets, examine the speed limits, and then, you know, make recommendations as to how we can mitigate our traffic problems. So, this would be the first step in doing that. It also makes any changes the board decides to make legal, so you can't arbitrarily change a speed limit, you have to have a study behind that.
Right. So, at a meeting a few weeks ago, we voted to change the speed limit in a neighborhood, and we were informed that that's actually a violation of Mass DOT, and that we can't simply do that. So, this is a first step in looking at townwide traffic, not just a specific area. We want to make sure that a change that we make on one street doesn't immediately flood a neighbor as, a neighborhood as a brand-new cut-through all of a sudden because we did something. So, we want to make sure that the changes we make make sense and truly do address the traffic issue, so that is what is behind that.
Can I just ask how long that type of study takes?
Yeah, of course you can.
Thank you.
So, anyway, so I don't know how long it's going to take. I know that DPW has been talking about this for a while. They told us that this is what we need, we need money to do it, they don't have it in the budget, so it's why we're taking it out of mitigation. But they are ready to go once this is approved. They just got the quote from the engineering firm, so I think it will be relatively quickly, but I don't think it's something that they study just over the weekend. It'll be a little bit of an extended time, so that they're getting proper data.
Mr. Chairman, if it makes it up to twelve months, starting upon completion of Task One.
Okay.
So, one month, so up to roughly, to get everything done. Recommendations to us, to the board? If that answers your question.
Did they not do one when they did the work for Dedham Street and Washington Street? I thought there was a mention of doing a traffic survey when those projects were being done. Were they not done?
So, the Dedham Street one was part of the Topgolf and the Route ninety-five exchange, but it was specifically for that. This is a townwide one, so it will hopefully look at the traffic light patterns and make sure that traffic is flowing. It's one of the, you know, complaints, as Mr. Duty said, we used to hear that people fly through the center of town, and now we have these traffic lights, and people complain it's so slow to go through the center of town. So, it's trying to balance and make sure that we're not creating log jams in encouraging people to cut through and use ways to send them on your neighborhood where nobody's ever been on this neighborhood before, but that's what we're trying to do, so a townwide look. So, the Dedham Street is separate from that.
Another suggestion would maybe be to do the DPW projects during the summer, when the town's empty, and not the first week of school.
Well, so sometimes the school traffic is what we want to look at.
Well, it's the town projects, the roadwork always starts a few weeks before school starts, so clearly.
Oh, you're talking about road paving and stuff like that?
Yeah, every single year, that's a major issue. All of a sudden, all the DPW trucks show up on Washington Street while the school buses are joining them.
Yeah, so it really is difficult, because there is no good time, and I know you're saying the summer.
When the town's empty.
But we go by fiscal year, which is July one, so once everything is approved, a town meeting, contracts then go out to bid, and then we immediately want to start, so it is unfortunate timing.
But you can plan so that that money's available for the time that, like, you know it's an ongoing problem every year, so wouldn't you make the fiscal year stretch to cover whatever difference? Like, you would plan accordingly to cover that.
So, in order to do that, there would be a year that we don't pave any roads?
No, I mean, you're saying, like, you plan ahead. People have been complaining for as long as I've lived in the town regarding the fact that the roadwork always starts at the same time that the school year starts. So, if that's a known fact within the town, that seems like there, that should be one thing that should definitely be looked at, and you're saying there's no good time to do that work? The summer, when the town is a ghost town and there is no traffic whatsoever, is a really good time to do that roadwork?
All right.
And whatever fiscal planning needs to go into it falls on you guys, not on me, to make.
I'll pass that on to the DPW.
The other thing we have to realize, too, is the surge bid, we all in the same bid for paving companies. Canton is, Stoughton is, Sharon is, we're all going to the same people.
I know, it's a lot of excuses for a problem that's been going on.
It's not an excuse, it's a reality.
John, I was speaking, I didn't cut you off while you were speaking.
It's a reality.
They are excuses, you're blaming this, this, and this, but it's been an ongoing problem, and at any given point, it could have been acknowledged and started to be planned to address.
All right, thank you, Ms. O'Donnell, we'll take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Yes, I was going to take this opportunity.
Name and.
Gail White from Canton. Yeah, a few weeks ago, and numerous times, as I entered Demonton Street, entering the town of Canton, I was stuck at the light there with the seven-eleven, and I waited, and I waited, and I waited, and I waited, and the light never changed, and that happened numerous times. When that happens, I end up going through the red light, because it never changed. I sat there for probably eight minutes, nine minutes, ten minutes, because this is ridiculous, and, you know. So, who do I contact when I keep running into lights that never change?
So, DPW.
You can contact our office, and then we'll.
Okay, so if that happens on a Saturday night, I just wait until, like, Monday?
Well, yeah, obviously, there's no one here Saturday night.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, because it also happens a lot of times in Boliv Street, entering the town, the light doesn't change, but it also happens mostly on DePonce Street, right at the seven-eleven, at that, and it just never changes. So, I just didn't know, and I hated to let it go, because the next week, at the light, same thing, nobody reported it, the light never changed, end up going through a red light, because the light never changed, but I said, I've got to find out who to contact, because it's kind of, you know, a stupid problem that I don't know if anybody's aware of, but it needs to be corrected so that the traffic does move, because it jams up. And then, you're taking a chance going through the light, because the person behind you thinks you just ran through a red light, and, but they don't know that I've already been sitting there for eight minutes, so I just want to know, the DPW.
So, so I'm going to contradict Mr. Duty. You can visit the DPW website at any point.
Okay, and just let them know what intersection is not working properly.
Because that is monitored twenty-four-seven.
Right.
So, if it happens on a Saturday night, they will see it, and they'll send it through.
Same thing, too, if the light gets stuck flashing and never changes, that's a really scary situation.
Yes.
Because that's happened at Boliv, and it's like, everybody's cutting everybody off, and, well, the lights are not timed right to the other light, and then, it's people are plugging up that, and I'm stuck on Boliv Street, entering Washington Street for three sets of lights, because the people in Washington are cutting us off, and we're stuck waiting.
Yeah.
And it's kind of aggravating, so something's wrong with those two set of lights there.
So, I have brought that up to DPW, and I'm going to look at that, because I share the same concern.
Yeah, it shouldn't take, you know, ten minutes to get through one set of lights, you know? All right, so the DPW.
DPW, their website, they have a place for citizen complaints, concerns.
Complaints, okay, great, and just, not even complaint, it's an awareness, so it doesn't help somebody else, because when I went through the light, I know the person that came up behind me said, that person just went through the red light, but I felt like saying, hey, look at, don't sit here, because it's not going to change.
You weren't in my shoes, I get it.
Yeah, I know, okay, thanks.
All right, so, we had a motion, and we did have it seconded. Any further discussion regarding the use of these mitigation funds? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four-zero.
Mr. Chair, we have the vendor warrant total for the week of three twenty-twenty-five, four million eight hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents. The payroll warrant total for the week of three twenty-twenty-five, one million nine hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
All right.
Next, we have the town administrator update.
I got a lot of stuff. Sorry. Couple of things. Got notice from Mr. Trotter from the DPW, and he was advised by the, I'm just going to read this, so you can hear it. Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Mass DEP, is requiring the town of Canton to prohibit nonessential outdoor water use. The town's water withdrawal permit stipulates nonessential outdoor watering must be limited to no more than two times per week, and must take place between five P M. and nine A M. This daytime restriction helps the town's water system promote the sustainable use of our shared water resource. This restriction is in place annually, May first through October first. So, obviously, nonessential water uses, things like lawn sprinklers would be included in this. So, you wanted to get that out there, because it's May first, is the, it's an annual restriction that goes out, but folks don't always adhere to it. So, that can also be found on the DPW's website, if anyone wants to read the letter from the DEP. Next, from the DPW, again, the two thousand and twenty-five paving schedule is complete. So, if folks are interested, and if their street's going to get paved this year, you can go on to the DPW website, and you can take a look at the spreadsheet and see what roads are scheduled for paving. The town meeting, the election schedule. So, just as a reminder, we made the announcement last week, we'll make it again. The annual town election is Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Polls open at seven A M., and they're open until eight P M. And then, in addition to that, there is early voting. So, early voting will take place here at Town Hall, Monday, March thirty-first, eight to five; Tuesday, April first, eight to seven; Wednesday, April second, eight to five; Thursday, April third, eight to five; and then, Friday, April fourth, eight to one P M. And if folks don't know what precinct they're in or where to report, they can also go to the Town Clerk's website to find that information. Brief update for you, do you want me to stop?
Question, is there not early voting on Saturday, March twenty-ninth?
There is not.
There is not?
Not, it ends Friday.
Okay.
According to the clerk. Friday, April fourth is the last.
That's correct, so it's this Saturday, but that's the last Saturday, there's only one Saturday.
Right. Oh, I thought you were talking about, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking the fifth. Update for you on the Norwood Hospital plan, so we had our first task force meeting two weeks ago, and it was a good meeting, there's a lot of talented people on the task force. Toto Norwood has a good plan to try to get that hospital back under construction, and if folks are interested to see the plan on Norwood Hospital, they can go to finishthejobnorwood.com. On that website, you can get information about the new working group, you can view the history of Norwood Hospital, you can get, review the timeline of the closure, and then, if you'd like, you can get involved in their advocacy efforts to reopen that hospital. So, we're hopeful that this group is going to be able to work with the Commonwealth to get that project moving again. I have, I was contacted by the Deputy Commissioner of Public Health Hospital System for DPH. As you know, the governor was interested in putting together a stakeholder group to look at the closure of the Pappas Hospital, and I was asked by that office to co-chair that committee with Ted Constant, the Deputy Commissioner of Public Health. So, before I accept that challenge, I want to let the board know that the governor's office reached out to me and asked me to fill that role. So, if the board is supportive of that, I will do that. If they're not, then I will pass.
Say approve it before he changes his mind.
So, I have a concern. So, on the surface, I think it's great that Mr. Duty would be co-chairing, he would be the voice for Canton, he would represent us, and we would also have inside, not inside, early information if plans were going to change. So, I absolutely see the benefit, and I think Mr. Duty would do a fantastic job. My concern is, if the plan is to close this facility with, you know, a slight pause that's occurred, is this just a way to save face, that, hey, you know, Canton was in the loop on all of this, and, you know, here's the roll call vote where Mr. Duty said, yep? So, I just, I'm fine doing it, I just, I have that concern, because when this was first announced, as this board knows, we were not in the loop whatsoever, we were caught off-guard, as many residents and employees of Pappas were. So, I just don't know if politically, if this is kind of like a smokescreen to be able to justify closing it down the road. Just my concern.
And I don't know the answer to that question, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I do know that the two officials I spoke with from DPH and from the governor's office assured me that, you know, no decisions had been made as of now, and that this stakeholder group, which is fairly significant, would have legitimate input as to the future of that site. I can't say, you know, with any certainty that that decision hasn't been made at the upper levels, but I have to take it at face value, and at the very least, I think we have an opportunity to at least convey to the governor's office how important that facility is and was to the town.
Yep.
I think it's a great idea that he's on that.
Yep, yep.
He's in there.
All right, so this doesn't need a motion, this could simply be the will of the board, so is everybody okay asking Charlie to co-chair this? So, there you are, sir, you have it.
I think, I think I'm happy about that.
I'll try to find out.
And then, I just have, I have one more announcement. So, the Director of Finance, Mr. Randy Scollins, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Oh, thank you.
Just Nate Naaman.
Jennifer Wexler, Canton.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Duty, for talking about the April eighth election and the opportunities for people to vote. In addition to just wanting to reinforce that early voting does start March twenty-ninth at Town Hall, I just wanted to say that many people don't realize that if they wanted to vote by mail and ballot, that they must request their mail and ballot no later than April first. And to request your mail and ballot, you can either go to the website for our clerk's office, and there is the two thousand and twenty-five mail and ballot application, which you can download, and then either drop at the office here, or you can mail it, scan it, and mail it in. And also, if you prefer, there is our Mass Secretary of State online mail and ballot application system, if you want to check and see if you're registered to vote, or if you want to request a mail and ballot, you can do that. So, I just wanted to mention that, because a lot of people assume that because they had a mail and ballot last November, that they're automatically going to receive it, and in fact, they won't. So, please, if you choose to vote by mail and ballot, please apply through the, these, either of these two options on or before April first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wexler.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Duty?
Last thing I'd, Mr. Chair, is from our Finance Director, Randy Scollins. He wanted me to announce for folks who aren't aware that the Canton Police Audit Community Forum will take place at the Canton High School Auditorium. It's scheduled to take place on Saturday, April fifth, from two P M. to five P M. The presentation will be by Five Stones Intelligence, followed by a Q and A. from the attendees. The session will be moderated by an experienced, independent moderator from another community. And for those who are unable to attend, the presentation will be livestreamed by Canton Community Access Television, and in addition, the report will be available for download on the town's website prior to the meeting.
Thanks.
That is all I have.
Wait, so when will it be available on the town's website? Do you know?
My understanding is that the committee is meeting on the third.
Yep.
To accept the report, and then, that's the first thing that has to happen, and once accepted, the report will be posted on the town's website. So, it's possible, it could be, depending on what time the committee meets, I think it's early afternoon, it could be on the night of the third, but certainly by the fourth.
All right.
Question?
Quickly.
I just want to know, do we know how much time is being allotted for questions on that? Is it a three-hour timeframe? Do we know?
So, Ms. Lombardi, that's a question for the Police Audit Committee.
Oh, okay, I just, I didn't know if you know.
Yep.
We just know it's two to five P M.
Yep.
With a hot stop at five.
Mr. McCourt?
The select board will hold the next meeting on Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, seven P M. at the Sala Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, eight oh one Washington Street.
Any other announcements from the board? Hearing none, Mr. McCourt?
I make a motion that we adjourn at eight oh nine.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four-zero, we are adjourned at eight oh nine. Everybody have a good evening. Aye, four zero. We adjourned at 8:09. Everybody have a good evening.
That if there, God forbid, was something like that, it's not that we don't have resources around us that would be able to jump into action almost as, if not as, quickly as our local police force as well.
I would challenge that, though, how long between the first cruiser that can get somewhere and...